And I know that Dell has reassured us that, that there would be deed restrictions and things like that. But that's really an important part of our city, I think. It's an iconic property, as was mentioned last time. We, we live in the Wolf House and that's maybe not quite as iconic, but, but very recognizable to this town. And it's something we want to protect, we want to preserve, we want to preserve the neighborhood. We, we know a lot of other neighbors that have put a lot of money into their homes. And they're, they're charming and unique in themselves. And so to protect the, the feel of that neighborhood, we really want to preserve that. The application did mention, and Dell did too, that rezoning was for highest and best use possible. And in my opinion, highest and best use possible is not high density apartment complexes. But developing the raw land behind it using single family. I know, I just disagree that putting single families behind there would be anything but good for the neighborhood. You've got two elementary schools that are within three tenths of a mile of this property. And these families, these young families need homes. We have a, we have a single, we have a home, you know, shortage, home shortage for single family residences. And I just believe that our community would be best served by developing that using see, single family. Anyway, my time is probably up, so thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. So anybody else here who wishes to speak against this rezone? All right. Please state your name and address.
My name's Daniel Dowell. I live at 1092 West Frye. As well, I'm friends with Toby and Dell, so it's hard to be here opposing something that they have invested in and what they're pushing for. But as he said, this is just not the best thing for the neighborhood. You know, it would immensely increase traffic, which is already a problem there. Just getting out of our driveway, we're right on the corner of Ollie and Frye. And sometimes it's a nightmare, as you can imagine. And this would just, you know, exacerbate that. You know, and then the home values, if, if there was a high density multifamily dwelling built there, I feel like it would destroy our home values. And we have just put everything we have into our home. We're constantly working on it and, you know, that's all we've got. And I just want to go on record as opposing this rezone.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else who wishes to speak against? I think, yes. Please state your name and address.
My name is Kelly Salt and I live at 882 North Clinton. And I'm sorry, don't know either one of these gentlemen. So I have nothing against them. I also live in an iconic structure, as some of y'all might know it, as the Scott home, Bob Scott's home. Even though I've been there 23 years, I don't think it'll ever be known as the Salt home. It's either going to be the Scott home or the Malloy home. I'm not sure, but anyway. When I found out with the potential issues that may come with the multifamily, at first I was misunderstanding and I thought perhaps they were just going to develop the backside of the lots that was, they're empty now and turn them into duplexes or something. I'm like, well, that's okay. I can see that that might be needed. But yeah, when I imagine like something that looks like the Edge going up, right there on that corner or something like that, just, I feel like, like the other people here have said, the traffic is hideous. I live right there on the corner of Clinton and Frye. The traffic for school pickup wraps around my house every day where I can't, I have two driveways to get in and out of my property and I can't get in and out. And I'm nowhere near the corner that he's talking about, so I can't imagine. I just feel like, you know, there's definitely maybe a need for apartments in Stevieville for more students. And I know we have to support Tarleton and everything that happens with their expansion. But I do feel like, you know, more on the outskirts of town would be more appropriate locations for those rather than just right there at that location where, you know, we do have the schools on each side of us. And I can see that it could just cause a lot of problems in the future, so I'm just here to oppose that.
Thank you. So anybody else who wishes to speak against this rezone? Yes, sir.
My name's Josh Rijie. I live at 990 North Ollie. Just pretty much standard, we, we face this property and so we would be opposed to it just for the sake of, but you gotta be lighting, already a lot of traffic, a lot of, I don't know, mischief, whatever, but this is probably going to be college kids, so, it's not fun having all that right there where you live. And we got kids that used to play in the street. It's definitely getting busier. So yeah, I'd be opposed to it, just on basis of that. Yeah, that's, that's for Dell.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else who wishes to oppose this rezone?
I'm Jeremy Harlow. I live at 1084 Frye. We've been there for, you know, 20 something years and, and I, I do kind of know Dell, Toby, talked to him a few times. I do understand progress and, you know, develop your city to, you know, improve things. But putting or zoning a city block inside of a neighborhood, I just don't see that being beneficial in its best use. I think if we could, look at it maybe as a, like, single family, I think several mentioned, would benefit and improve the neighborhood. But a full out, you know, high density multifamily, I think would really, I can see the progress in the future because it's, you know, Tarleton's growing, right? We all understand that neighborhoods nearby, it's gonna, it's gonna eventually develop. But I want to stand with, with the neighbors here and oppose it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes.
Hi, my name is Gina Woodson. I'm at 875 North Clinton. I've been there for 21 years and like all of these people, we love our historic homes. We love the neighborhood. The Chandler mansion has just been beautiful. I mean, we just, we love it. My main concern is the safety of the kids. As everybody says, hook, I mean, it just wraps right around all of that. And I know my kids, it's, it's a third and fourth grade school and my kids have walked, like, when they forget their key to get into the house, they would walk down Clinton, down that road to Litis to call me. And that would be crossing right in front of this apartment complex. And I know there's a lot of kids who have walked home, you know, that way. And I just think it's really dangerous and I'm against it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Hannah Dowell and I live at 1092 West Frye on the corner of Ollie and Frye. So in the beginning, I was not necessarily opposed to the rezoning. I'd spoken with Toby a couple of times on our front porch about their plan. And he had always told us that his plan was to live in the home that, that they're living in now and hopefully restore the mansion, which I was all about. I've recently found out that that's probably not what they're wanting to do eventually, which is totally fine. But as far as my home value is concerned, my husband and I have put over $75,000 into our home since purchasing it. And it would, we would never get the return on our, on our investment there. And our, our kids, I've requested from the post office to move our mailbox onto Ollie instead of on the Frye Street. And they've refused to do that. But the reason is, is because my kids like to go out and check the mail with me. And it's so dangerous right now, myself standing in the street to check my mailbox, I almost get run over on a daily basis. So putting a R3 on the entire block, which would be Toby's house, the mansion and the lot, that would enable somebody to tear that down. And if they have a good enough lawyer, they'll be able to. And it would cause more fear for my children and we're, we're raising our family there. And we can't use our front yard for anything because of the traffic currently, let alone if you put something of that capacity across the street from us. That's what I see out my front door and out my living room windows. When I open my windows, I see our beautiful mansion across the street with the, with the trees and the, and the wildlife that run around out there and stuff, and it's beautiful. Toby has increased the value of his home by, by doing all kinds of things to the outside and it's beautiful as well. But to take that away from our entire, entire, you know, neighborhood, we've all thrown so much money into this. And I appreciate the fact that they want to make their money back and do highest and best use. But personally, I believe that that can be utilized on the back portion of that lot without rezoning the house and the mansion. Whether it be, I mean, I'm, I'm a property manager. I manage tons of properties here and a realtor. We do have a housing shortage. We do have, we, we do need multi-housing units. But in the middle of our personal neighborhood, to take that down and put the Edge there, I would be tremendously disappointed in y'all. And, and that's everybody that would be involved in making that decision. And as well as, you know, we have the downtown revitalization stuff going on. Why would we allow for the Chandler mansion to potentially be destroyed? That goes against what we're trying to do to the downtown. Why would we do that to, to neighborhoods? Why would we do that to our, to a historic neighborhood in our town if we're not willing to do that to our historic square? So that's, that's it.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak?
Good afternoon. My name's Rick Woodson. I too am at 875 North Clinton. And I'd just like to bring up a couple of things that maybe there could be a good study about traffic flow in that area, in the area, prior to some due diligence that might need to be done to examine that in the area and see what kind of traffic flow could be improved. But I too agree that there is an opportunity on the backside of the, of the property to divide it up and put some multifamily units back there, duplexes or townhomes that could help multiple families. Because we are concerned about, you know, traffic in the area. Every day we deal with it during, when school's in, but also the safety of, of the area as well, you know. I'm sure there's plenty of studies out there that would show that when you build high occupancy, you know, in the college towns, just pop up those, those complexes, that there is some crime and some, some mischief that takes place. And there's some good studies out there. If you'll do some due diligence and look at that as well. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Okay, we'll go ahead and close this pub. Sure, if you'd like to come, come up and address some of these issues.
I respect you guys so much for property owners and neighbors. And that's always, that's always important. Can we see some pictures? Listen, can we get the 1150 Frye, it's the new brick?
They did not come with.
That one didn't come? Oh, okay. There's a, you guys are all familiar with the quadplexes, the brick ones on, at 1150 Frye, just about 100 yards from the mansion. I sold that property to the people who built that. I've got a little bit of a history and experience and ability in dealing with properties that are, have been vacant and abandoned and dilapidated and not taken care of here in Stevieville. This mansion is one of the bigger ones that I've done. And I would never allow the mansion to be taken down or Toby's house. All we're talking about is the back path. Now, the reason for the rezone on all of it is so we're not spot zoning. Toby's property has some extra land that may be cut off and added to the mansion property. I have seen properties in other mid-sized college towns where they take an old antique structure like that and they build new multifamily, two-story, four-plex, high-quality stuff that fits with that structure. And they use that structure for offices and great rooms and things like that. So it's not possible at this point to cut and replat the mansion off. But when we sell it, we will definitely deed restrict it. And it's very important. I would never allow anything to happen to the mansion. I'm not going to be known as the guy in Stevieville that got the mansion taken down. So that is the, we're, we're not talking about big monstrosities like the Edge. I would not want that there. I would not sell it to anybody that would do that. So.
I'm sorry. So what are your plans exactly for the mansion? Are, are you planning to simply resell, sell this property off to a developer?
Correct. So what we're trying to do is, is prepare the property for the right buyer. I don't know if you know it or not, that, the, the last owner of that property bought it in 1979. They were hoarders. They could have been on the television show with hoarders. It was this deep throughout.
Inside the mansion?
A thousand dollars, a thousand dollars in there. There were Afghan rugs and things from China and Japan. It was crazy. Just the whole basement, everything was completely full. And, and the, and the mansion needs some repair. It needs a full renovation. The interesting thing about properties like that is that people who want them, want to renovate them themselves. I can't go in there and renovate it and do it the way an end user wants it. I can do that with regular houses. We do that constantly with regular houses in Stevieville. We just, we sold, as a matter of fact, we sold a property that's right next door to Toby's on the corner of Kite. We found the right buyer for that. They have renovated that one. They did paint the trim blue. We call it neighbor hater blue. I just, I just, we just completed a complete renovation on 867 Ollie, which is right behind the greenhouse on the corner. Spent $80,000 on that renovation. We finally got 937 Frye bought, which was vacant and a hoarder house for over 20 years. So that renovation is about to begin. But a mansion property like that, the end user needs to renovate it.
Okay. So I don't think it would be a spot zoning to leave that R1 because it's adjacent to R1 and to simply do R3 on the remaining property.
So the mansion on its lot is a 3.67 acre lot, so it's all.
So you would want to shave off some of that land is what, is what you're suggesting for, toward an R3?
Are we talking about the mansion or?
The mansion.
Well, yeah, it's all one piece. It's 3.67 acres that the mansion sits on. So I don't know, if I find the right buyer for the mansion who wants to renovate it and live in it, I don't know how much land they're going to want. So I can't replat it now, ahead of time.
I'm, I'm not suggesting replat it. I'm suggesting leaving it R1.
But that's the entire property.
No, right now it's two separate, two separate properties.
Toby's property is .67 acres.
Right.
So the vast majority of the block is the mansion property.
This is the mansion?
But Toby's house and the mansion.
And you're wanting to rezone Toby's house as R3 as well?
Correct.
And what's the purpose of that?
Two purposes. One, so we are not spot zoning. We own and control the whole block. So rezone the entire block as we're doing it. Two is, is Toby's lot is extra large. So there's a little bit of space in the back that we may want to shave off and sell to the R3 developer in the back.
Okay. I understand.
So those are two, the two purposes.
Okay. Anybody else have questions for Mr. Burdick?
You're, you're planning on putting deed restrictions in that will limit those two on the front. So the likelihood of an Edge is, there's not.
It's non-existent. I would not, I would not sell it to anybody who thinks they need to put an Edge there. You know, Tarleton is, is their 2020 plan. If this is the mansion lot intended to be on that catty corner by, already, they're running late, but they're going to be there, catty corner from this property.
I'm sorry, why not do R2? Why, why R3?
Because R2 does not allow for a quadplex. And so really with the value of that land, it is the last piece of land that has never been developed this close to the university. never been developed this close to the university in old Stevieville. There's no structures to contend with. There's no, no old stuff to deal with. It is fresh land. And it is extremely valuable. And it just, it doesn't function as all duplexes. You know, even, even the townhomes over here, those are fourplexes. You know, we're looking at two-story, high-quality, four-plex properties.
What about the duplexes that, that have gone up near the downtown, just off the square, uh, over by Vandenberg's Clinics?
Those are, those are fours.
Those are fours?
The townhomes?
Yeah.
I believe those are fours.
I'm pretty sure they're duplexes.
Okay.
They're two-story, but they're duplexes.
I mean, it's really semantics. You can shove, they're all shoved together. So duplexes shoved together, fourplexes.
Well, but, but the difference would be the number of families that are occupying those, those facilities. You've got, if you've got a four-plex in the same place, you've got a two-plex, you've got twice as many people, I, generally speaking.
I don't know that that's true. Cause your, your square footage is required, is the same requirement for a duplex or a four-plex.
Madam Chair, if, if I may, I believe.
Yes.
I had asked to share this picture. And so if I may.
Sure.
Is this the picture you wanted to share?
So that was a, that was a property I bought several years ago. It had an old dilapidated house on it. We renovated the house to a certain extent, held on to the property for a while, found the right buyer, and that's what they came in and built. And that's less than a hundred yards from the mansion property.
And those are duplexes?
Those are fourplexes.
Show it to them. I know this is probably hard to see from.
But they drop, they, they all drive by it every day. So.
Now, the one on the front, though, is a duplex.
Correct. Yeah, that's where their office is.
Right.
And, and.
So what you're seeing from the street is more of a duplex and then they get bigger at the back.
Right. I took that particular picture because it had the address in it from the street view.
And Tarleton's expansion portion coming to Frye and Ollie is nothing but student housing. If you look on the, uh, student housing parking. So the traffic is going to be issue.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Burdick?
You've got one. It's there. Uh, well, I, I guess, um, I guess my concern is, is, um. You, you say that you're going to, uh, you're going to make sure that there are deed restrictions. Um, you are one business partner, Mr. O'Neil is the other. Are there any other business partners who maybe aren't so, so inclined?
We do have another partner, and I'm, I'm the one that has the controlling decision.
Okay.
You know.
I mean, that's, I, it's, it is a legitimate question.
No, absolutely.
If y'all are both here saying, no, we're going to make sure there's deed restrictions.
And granted, I could, I could stand up here and tell you whatever I thought you wanted to hear. I'm not, you know, I have a long, I have a, I have a history of, I have a history. I have experience. I have, you know, I, I have some accomplishments in Stevieville, uh, on these types of properties. And at the end of the day, if you don't think that I'm the right steward for this property, or if you think that I'm wrong, or I'm missing something on this particular property, please vote against it.
Have you considered a plan development? Have y'all talked about that?
Talked about it.
I, I watched the last, I was not present for the last meeting, but I was.
So with the plan development, you know, that's a mixed commercial residential use. And it is very, very specific. Building materials, where every tree goes, where every parking spot goes. We don't have that at this point. Now, a future buyer that we agree to sell to, maybe stand in front of you in the future with a PD plan. But with, with the time and the money and expense in producing a PD, and that's not us. So a PD does not work for us at this time. We're trying to create a blank slate, sellable property for the right buyers.
With a deed restriction.
Right.
Uh, I, I guess, can I, can I speak to that? I, I just, my concern for the property owners, and, and they have come out in, in full force, uh, it seems to me.
Madam Chair, point of order, there's no motion on the floor.
Yeah.
At this point, we need to stop discussion.
Yeah. One, one, let, let us finish here and then you can bring that up. Um, any further questions for Mr. Burdick? Thank you, sir. Okay, can I get a motion?
I would like to recommend a counsel denial of RZ twenty-two-one dash zero-zero-eight.
Second.
Okay. Now, please go ahead with your.
Second.
May I ask all the questions you want?
Okay. So, so my concern obviously is for the property owners. They have come out in full force, um, in, in addition to those here today, as well as the letters. Um, they clearly have a, a, a property interest, um, in, in the, those who have invested in their properties, um, in making sure that it ma- it, it maintains a certain aesthetic. And, um, I, I am familiar with this neighborhood. Um, and, and I, I, I would be hard-pressed to, um, to agree that something even as similar as the Frye Street, which is very well done, I've been in it, seen it, lovely property. But, but to, to give a blank slate, which is essentially what you're asking for, to the developer who may come in and may do exactly what we hope, and that's, and, and that would be to, um, renovate that mansion and make it look pretty and make it work with everybody else's and maybe even maintain, uh, the O'Neills' property while they develop the, the property around it. That would be fantastic. That's a, that's a dream scenario. But I don't see it happening, um, not when, when, when a prudent investor is going to be looking at their bottom line. And, and, um, that prudent investor who's looking at their bottom line is not caring what the people across the street is, uh, they're not caring about their property values. They're looking at their bottom line. And, and I have to respect that, um, for the, for the property, the current property owners. And that's why I would disagree. Uh, and that's why I would vote for, uh, to deny the, the RZ three.
Further discussion?
I'm, I'm looking at the future land map. When you look at the future land map, it has a clear buffer for Frye Street to de- to develop north as single-family. And to the south be the multifamily. And with that buffer, it's a definable area. Stops the spot zone into that area, even though it's not really considered a spot zone with the block, but it does with the entire future map. And it eliminates that buffer for Frye Street to be the street to divide the single-family versus the multifamily areas. And I believe Tarleton's probably using Frye Street as a buffer to define the campus as well. And so with that, we need the single-family homes there.
Steve, do we have a, a photo of the current zoning map, bigger? Not just to keep pulling up? Yes, sir.
While Steve pulls that up, are there any other concerns?
I did have one, um, the, on the water, the, the available water lines, water and sewer lines. I noticed that, um, the water line seemed to be getting, who knows? Was it that one? Oh, uh, it, first of all, along Frye Street, especially right there in front of, uh, in front of the, uh, the, the main, the Chandler Mansion.
Mm-hmm.
It goes to just, to just four. But then along, uh, Kite Street, it's only three-quarters. Yeah. Um, and then it's only two on, on the Ollie side. So that, that seems to me like that might be an issue as well. A significant issue. Um, especially if you're wanting to build multi-family units.
Yeah. And, and, and I'm just, I'm worried about the traffic. That's a busy area.
It is a super busy area.
So busy.
Especially in the morning and, and at the afternoon.
At any time.
Yeah, really.
Anytime you drive through there, it's crazy busy.
Lunch hour.
So currently, pretty much everything around the entire lot is currently zoned R three. Is that correct?
Minus two blocks?
Minus two blocks. Meaning that the block that has light is currently today could be purchased by developer and developed as R three and never come before this emission, correct?
Correct.
Same to the north, northeast, block after block.
It's a lot of single-family homes that we currently have, those that they would have to buy up. That, I mean, I just, that's a lot.
Right.
Ideally, yes, you're correct.
It's happened. And right across on, on North Place or whatever that place is. Right across from. So this looks to me to be conducive with the current zoning map.
Except that you have that set of single families right across the street. I mean, I, a whole block, entire, and a whole, entire block.
And then the future land use map has the entire block to the south as R threes.
Can I ask where our future land use comes, came from? How, how long?
Plan of twenty, conference, two thousand.
So it's about twenty-one year, twenty years old?
Oh, they're working on it this year, I think.
Yeah, so they, they constantly revisit it.
Every twenty years, it's updated, I think.
Updated, yeah.
Every twenty years.
Yeah. All right, are we ready to vote? Does everybody, does anybody have anything else to say?
I, I do have, can I, can I pose a question to the property owners?
Sure.
I know that's maybe unusual. Are there, are any of you, would any of you be opposed if this was zoned, say, for more stu- a little more strict set? Because I think that is an option, is an a- alternative to the R three. Um, if, if it was zoned for, say, duplexes and single families, if this was to be developed kind of opened up, so, so you might have duplexes but not, um, but not the R three being furnished.
That's what it is going to be. It'll be deed restricted.
I mean, the whole thing is going to be zoned. I, I think they're just worried that the deed restrictions won't hold.
Not sure.
That's correct. A good lawyer will be able to work through deed restrictions.
All right.
Yeah, here's the strong point. You have, the, the zones exist for a reason.
Right.
To protect property owners around them, not, not for new people coming in.
Correct.
That's, so people buy houses under a frequency notion that right across from them is an R one zone. It's protecting their value. You don't put a, you don't put a salvage yards next to that. With that said, we have a little issue here, but the future land use is still R one. I understand what the owners are trying to do. They're trying to make the biggest thing without the minutes, with the minimum, with the minimus, least amount of financial put-in, whether that be a PD, because you have to come in with all these things. I get it. But in the end, zoning's here for one reason and one reason, in my opinion, and that's to protect property values of existing people, not future people. And so I don't see how this protects that.
Let's go ahead and vote. We're going to do a roll call vote on this because I think it might be dicey. Um, so the motion as it stands is, uh, to recommend counsel denial of the rezone request at ten-eighty-three Frye. So, uh, Justin, are you?
Uh, yes.
You're, uh, you're for the denial?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes, for the denial.
Okay. Uh, I am for the denial. Nick? Nick is no?
Yes.
Aye.
And, okay, so we will recommend to counsel that they deny this rezone request. But as you know, counsel makes the final decision on this, not us. So, uh, you'll want to show up to counsel, uh, to the next city council meeting to make your case once again. Okay, so what, we're going to go ahead and hit the next item on the agenda, which is obviously closely related. Case number RZ two-zero-two-one dash zero-zero-nine, applicant Tobiah O'Neil, representing Antade LLC, is requesting a rezone of property located at ten-eighty-three Frye. Parcel R three-two-two-six-zero of Kite, second edition, block five, lot one of the city of Stevieville, Erath County, Texas, from R one, single-family residential to R three, multifamily. Steve, do you have anything additional to add?
Madam Commissioner, this is basically the, the same type of case, just for a separate parcel, neighboring parcel. So again, current zoning is R one, single-family. Future land use is also a single-family. Much of the same information throughout the, the staff report. The maps will be, just a, uh, will be very similar, uh, just showing that it's for the adjacent property. In this particular case, um, we had five letters designated in opposition. And those have been uploaded to your packet as well. And with that, ma'am, I'd be, uh, willing to try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Steve? Don't you have anything?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, on that water, the water line issue, do you have an answer on that? Do you know what?
Can you rephrase it or re-present that question to me?
So, so the, we, we were concerned about the water availability on, on either side, on Ollie and Kite. I think it, it drops to like three-quarters.
Yeah, if you look at them.
And two.
Okay.
Or I read that as three-quarters. Is it three-quarters or is it three, three to four? And that?
That's for one half.
Yeah, that's what I.
Well, so for this case tonight, um, if it were approved and we move forward with the development, that when we get into the, the review process, we will make certain that there is adequate water and sewer available to the property, that the connections are appropriate.
And there's no detriment to the surrounding properties as well.
It is there, but if, if we need to make any additional measures for the proper development of an R three in this area, that would be addressed during the plan review time.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Burdick, do you have anything you want to add? Uh, Mr. O'Neil, anything? You're good?
No.
Okay. Um, we're going to go ahead and open a public hearing. Does anybody here wish to speak in favor of this rezone? Anybody wish to speak against? We can apply everything you've said to this one. So everybody good?
Yes.
All right, then we will go ahead and close the public hearing.
Do you need direction on that?
Commissioners? I need a motion.
I move that we recommend to counsel denial of RZ twenty-two-one dash zero-zero-eight.
I'll second that. Second that. Do we need to discuss? Shall we simply vote?
I just want to say, they do quality work. Everybody agrees.
Oh, I, I think, I, I don't think, I don't think we disagree on that.
This is not a personal thing on anything.
We want to protect our communities.
Yeah, this is not a, yeah, this is not a, just pointing it on the record.
Yeah.
All right.
We encourage you to do more quality work.
Okay, all those in, uh, favor of denying this request, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No. Okay. Um, so once again, we recommend to counsel denial of this request, but as you know, counsel has their own mind and, um, will make the final decision. So please, um, you know, come to the next council meeting and make your case once again. We appreciate everyone coming out and all the time you've put in and, and how much heart you have on this. We sympathize with everybody. So thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Case number RZ two-zero-two-one dash zero-one-one, applicant Erath County Habitat for Humanity is requesting a rezone of property located at seven-fifty Sloan, parcel R three-two-seven-two-nine of Park Place Edition, block four, lot four, of the city of Stevieville, Erath County, Texas, from R three, multifamily to B two, retail and commercial business. Steve?
Yes, ma'am, madam chair, thank you. Uh, Ms. Stacy Morrison is representing the Erath County Habitat for Humanity. She's requesting a rezone from B2, or to B2 retail and commercial, to allow for the construction of their administrative offices and connecting storage space for Habitat of Humanity. Assuming the rezone is approved, the applicant wants to replat to combine this parcel with 754 Sloan. Again, this is for their administrative offices. The property is currently zoned R3. Future land use is multifamily. If you look at the map of this particular property, it's got, it's a very narrow property. In fact, it's only twenty-four to twenty-five feet wide, based on GIS measurement. And they're wanting to combine that property with the adjacent property at 754, which is B2. And so, if this was approved tonight, they would replat. And that would possibly be a minor replat that we could approve at the atmospheric level, at the city staff level. We do have the maps for the current zoning for you, and also future zoning in your packet. Ms. Morrison, I see is here in the audience, and she is excited about this opportunity to, to have a office for Habitat for Humanity. And as you know, they offer some great services to the community. So, with that, ma'am, unless there are any questions, I can turn it over.
Thank you. Ms. Morrison, would you like to?
Toby did a lot of work for Habitat, too, so he does good work. Yes, I think that you guys have the pictures there. Twenty-five foot frontage, R3. Boy, yeah, we're talking about quadplexes and things like that, and this has got a twenty-five foot frontage. And it is adjoint to the B2. Makes the most sense to combine those. We have been building houses in Erath County since nineteen ninety-eight is the first house we incorporated in nineteen ninety-seven. We have done that without a warehouse, without office space, usually relying on businesses to donate space to us. And so, we'd like to build a home for Habitat. And that's what we have on, on plan to get started.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Okay.
All right, we're going to go ahead and open a public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak in favor of this rezone request? Anybody wish to speak against? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Can we get a motion, please?
Motion to approve. We recommend to counsel to approve.
Second.
I don't know what we're on.
All right. Any need for discussion on this one?
Okay, eleven.
We good? All right. The motion stands to recommend counsel approving this rezone request. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, this moves forward to counsel, and counsel will make the final decision. Thank you. All right, moving on to case number CP2021-001. Applicant Justin Willis is requesting a conditional use permit pursuant to section 154.05.03.C1 for a home occupation as defined in section 154.03 for property located at 1422 Prairie Win, parcel R31592 of Gulf Country Estates Edition, block four, lot five, of the city of Stevenville, Erath County, Texas. Steve?
Yes, ma'am. The applicant was recently contacted by the ATF, and they visited with this particular license holder. Agent Dee Robinson requested assistance from the city of Stevenville, and with the consent of Mr. Willis, we went to his property and actually performed an interior inspection. Per Agent Robinson, any transaction involving a firearm must occur at the locale listed on the licensee's application, and the licensee must comply with all city ordinances. If we look at the city ordinances for a single-family rental district, let's see here, where am I? The zoning code, I'm sorry, zoning code, section 154.03, it defines the home occupation. It lists certain criteria for a home occupation to operate in an R3, R1 area. Although it lists specific criteria, there is no other reference to regulations in the zoning code other than in the definition of that particular term in the definition section of section 154.03. The definitions for home occupation is listed on page sixty-three, and it lists the seven criteria. The criteria that would be in, of concern here would be bringing traffic into the residential area. And then also, the applicant stated that he does occasionally have some inventory on hand, which is, by definition, a violation of the Home Occupation Code. The city is, is not objecting to this CUP. It's not the, it's not a case that we generally hear, but it's not the first case we've heard. We've had similar cases in the past, one, the most recent being October of 2014. Very similar case, it was on Inglewood, and it was approved. And so, the applicant, I think, was under the impression, or was given the impression, that he would be here tonight. But he has submitted letters stating some information regarding his, his hobby/business, and then he's also had a couple of neighbors submit letters in favor of his case. And so, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Guys, have any questions for Steve?
If it's approved at a later date, say things change, his business is no longer more or less a hobby. Say it expands, and now there's all this traffic, and the neighbors start complaining. What, is there a process to remove the conditional use?
There is a process. I have it listed in the packet for you, and I can try to pull that up. It's basically the, the, there is a way to, to remove that conditional use.
Okay.
In general, it would remain in effect unless he did not pursue the conditional use within a certain timeframe.
Okay.
So, if, if those criteria expanded beyond that, then we would have an additional home occupation violation.
Very good.
Thank you.
So, so he is kind of limited in what he can do from the, from this home occupation? And then if he fell, if he falls out of that, then that's something that, that's, that was kind of my, like?
Basically, that's what it says.
He gets a conditional use permit to operate a home occupation, but the home occupation definition is still applied to that.
Would still apply. And if he fell out of that definition, then that would be about, okay. Which I think would address, like, if, if the traffic starts to pick up, and somebody's got?
Perhaps as a point of clarification, if a home occupation meets all the criteria, then a CUP is not necessary. But when they have a criteria that maybe they're not meeting, the only way they can continue operation is with a CUP.
Okay.
Say that again? So, so a plumber can run a plumber shop out of his house because they meet all the requirements? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
If the home occupation meets the seven criteria listed under the definition, then by ordinance, they are allowed to remain in operation in that R1 district as long as they stay within those criteria. If they deviate from the criteria, then a CUP is required.
And is this case, since he's going to carry a small inventory?
It's a small inventory.
And some traffic.
And the traffic generator, because by ATF regulations, he has to do the transfer at his property.
Got it. Okay.
And it would only be as long as it's a resident, if, if it would be in, in fact.
Be for this property, sir.
All right. Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and open a public hearing. All of those who wish to speak in favor of this conditional use? All those opposed? Closing the public hearing. Commissioners, we need a motion so that we can discuss.
I'll make a motion we approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Concerns? Mary, do you have some?
No, I mean, I, I read Mr. Willis's letter, and it seemed like he addressed any concerns I would have. And he obviously has some support from his neighbors who don't seem to think it's an issue. So, I don't, I, I feel like if there were some concerns, we'd have some, knowing this neighborhood, we would have some people here.
They weren't notified.
Oh, they weren't notified? They don't get notified about it?
Sure. They were notified.
Well.
I believe they were.
They were notified.
Were they notified? Because I didn't see anything in here.
We sent.
To how many people?
We may not have the list of addresses in there, but I am being, we, we did send the letters out saying two-hundred-foot notice.
Yeah. One of them actually, yeah, one of them actually says he got the letter, the letter.
Yeah, you're right, one letter did. I had a friend who lives in there, lives quite close to there, and she hadn't gotten anything.
We send letters all the time. Just for the record.
I can access that remotely if.
Okay.
Is that just personally, or?
Just to clarify.
Okay, so we ready to vote? Everybody feel, feel good? Okay. All those in favor of recommending to counsel, recommending to counsel approval of this conditional use permit, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That's me. Okay. So, the final item on our agenda is an update on the mobile home zoning. I'm sorry. Do I need to say for the empty audience that that item will go forth to counsel with a recommendation to approve? Now, Steve, update on the mobile home zoning.
Yes, ma'am. On May nineteenth, 2021, the commission requests the staff do some research regarding mobile homes and what actions would be necessary for the commission to establish a mobile home district. So, I provided some research information here for you, including some definitions. So, as, as you're very familiar with, the manufactured housing or home is defined. Mobile home is defined. Mobile home park is defined. And then we also have the nonconformance and nonconforming use definitions, which would address those parks that are currently in the city, although not zoned in industrial areas if, if so, if that would be the case. Mobile homes are regulated by chapter 153. As, as you have also heard in the past, these regulations are pretty stringent, have a very high set of requirements to operate a mobile home in the city of Stevenville, mobile home park. So, I have that listed for your review in your packet. And then there's also a mobile home district defined at section 154.05.7. However, there are currently no mobile home districts in the city. There is a future land use designation, and that is included in your packet on page seventy-eight, showing you where that, that particular park is. And if you, it is the light, I don't know, other than my basic colors, but a light purple color on the west side of town, basically, if you can see where I'm pointing.
Behind the Boski River.
Behind the Boski River Center. Bob White is one of the streets that is designated. And so, when we look at the local government code, the, any type, you know, I mentioned at the time that I needed to research this because it's a little more complicated than district to the whole hearing. We would have to publish in the paper that we were going to look at zoning districts. That would have to be fifteen days in advance, and then we would have to go through the same notification requirements that we normally do, which is two-hundred-foot radius of any property in the district that we were looking at, the area that we were looking at. And then ultimately, of course, it would have to go to counsel for approval. So, I understand, don't have a lot of historical knowledge of, of the city of Stevenville as far as recent cases and things of that nature, but I, I understand from previous discussion that this was maybe looked at once before. And of course, we have the comprehensive plan under review coming up in the, in the near future as we bring new staff on. So, if the commission wishes to pursue this, I, I think it would be prudent to maybe go back to the planning services committee and development services committee and talk to them. Maybe if you could give me some direction on what you're wanting to accomplish, what areas you're wanting to look at, let me get that in front of the committee, and then see if the committee wants to move forward after consulting with full counsel. So, that would be what I would understand of the best approach. And with that, I'd be glad to try to answer any questions you may have.
So, they're currently, are they currently working on the future land use or the comprehensive plan?
We have.
That's about to begin?
We have a, it's not a solidified plan, but we are trying to recruit a planner, and that planner will be, one of the main focuses for that planner will be to work on the comprehensive plan as we get them settled into the organization.
I just wonder if we need to deal with this right now? If we have somebody coming in who's about to revamp the whole thing, why spend our time on this? When it's not currently, there's nothing coming up around this. I understand, Bruce, your concerns with it being zoned industrial, and I agree. But in terms of creating a new zoning and all the detail that that would require, would it make more sense to simply put a pin in this until the comprehensive plan gets worked on?
I think, I think we should. I mean, if, if, if that's the plan in the, in the very near future, going, going, jumping through so many hoops here to, to get something changed, and then find out six months from now that we've got a whole new plan, which I assume that they're going to request our input, obviously, we're just wasting our time.
That's kind of what I'm thinking. What do you guys?
I'm still confused about the concern. There's a district in there, right? A mobile home district exists. Somebody could come ask for it and put a mobile home in it already, if they buy land, and put a mobile home district. Correct?
It's future land use.
So, I, Bruce, with all due respect, I don't understand your concern with, the mobile home exists, so they can ask.
Is your concern about an existing mobile home park?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because we, we had this come up, this was before several of y'all were on, were on the commission.
That's out.
Starlight Park over on 281.
Okay.
They requested a zoning change so that they could do modifications to the park. They were under the impression, this is when Jeremy was here. The owner had been told that to do any modifications to the park whatsoever, because they used to have RV spaces there. They have discontinued the use of attracting business from RVs, and they wanted to use tho, that space to add a couple of more permanent mobile homes. And it came before us, and because it was zoned industrial, we didn't want, or because mobile homes were only allowed to be zoned industrial, we didn't want to vote in an industrial district in a commercial, where everything is commercial. We didn't want to, we didn't want to plop down an industrial spot zone because of that trailer park. Now, the owner has not made those modifications because it was disallowed at that time. We, we voted it down because we did not want to change it to industrial zoning. But my contention is, is we should never have residential property inside an industrial zone or only industrial zoning. That, that's just, that's wrong on so many, in, in so many ways. Mobile home parks are low-cost housing. Unfortunately, not everybody makes enough of a salary to afford a permanent home. And so, if we create some area where you could put in mobile homes, the mobile home district, I think, is a great idea, and have minimal requirements for that, because you, you, you can't have a whole lot of requirements for it that continue to drive the cost up, because then you defeat the entire purpose of occupying a mobile home.
So, basically, we can table this for now, until the comprehensive plan, and return to it then?
Right. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I got no problem with that.
That's fine. I don't understand what we're tabling. The description of existing zoning, mobile homes is right here.
Right.
So, anybody can ask right now, just like ZB2.
Just like they came to for a reason, the R3, they could ask for a rezone to the mobile home.
So, it's good.
Yeah. I, I guess, the permitted use currently is that mobile homes only exist in industrial zones. That's what a current permitted use is.
As well as a mobile home district.
It, I don't even think we have a mobile home district.
We don't have a mobile home district.
Because that's for future land use. It exists in future land use, but it doesn't exist in current land use.
No.
It's the code that's, that you presented.
There's a definition of.
That's in our, right? It's currently part of our. We just don't have any currently, anything currently existing.
There's currently not on the map, that's correct.
Right.
However, 15, 154.05.7 is a mobile home district. It is existing in our code today.
And so, right.
You want to build a mobile home park?
Okay.
You go and reference 154.05.7 and say, I want this stuff.
Okay. So then the only question would be, should we pull, you know, the current mobile homes out of industrial? That would be the question. But I, I think we, we can.
Yeah, that's the question.
That's the question.
That's the question, then I, I would agree, we need to table.
But then, as, as Steve said, that would require a whole big effort. And we don't want to do that just yet until we see where the comprehensive plan is.
If I may, this whole discussion started when we were looking at the permitted uses table.
Right.
And the council at that time had asked us to only look at five of those, knowing that we would be doing more exhaustive work with the comprehensive plan in the future. So, I think that it makes sense to try to maybe look at it in the totality once we get to that point.
I agree.
So, just a recommendation.
Okay. Good. Now, we were supposed to look at comprehensive, look at this list and come up with additional. Did anybody do that? Does anybody have concerns? Again, with the idea of.
Madam Chair, we, we were going to go back and ask for counsel direction.
On where to go on that?
Additional work.
All right.
And I did suggest that, that you guys, the commission was ready to, to proceed in this exercise and continue to work. I believe the consensus is that we, we still wait.
We wait for the comprehensive plan?
And yes, ma'am. And I don't have it on the agenda, so we shouldn't really proceed with that.
I like that. Okay. Put your homework away.
I think when we hire a planner, we'll have.
We'll deal with that. I like that. I like that. Okay, so, all I think we need is a motion for adjournment.
Sorry. Adjourn.
We're going to recommend to counsel that we adjourn.
Counsel is still trying to figure out why they...